Is there anyone joining us in the flag of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Can I just make a request? Don't look forward when you say please. Would you remember that takes me a while than the rest of it? Thank you.
Exeter Monthly Town Council meeting for Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024 to order. Will the clerk please call?
Dan Pass, Michael Bay, Diane Allen, Pierre, Cal Lewis,
Here.
and Olivia Nekunizko is killed this evening.
Okay, next up is acknowledgements and announcements. A, the town of Exeter offices and departments will be closed on Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January 15th, 2024. Next is approval of the agenda order. Does anybody need to change anything around?
Move that the agenda order be approved as presented?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval consent agenda. There is two vouchers for that. Two or one, let's see.
Just one.
Okay. Does anybody need to remove any communications? New and Bino?
Yeah.
Four and eight, please. Cal?
Five, 12, and 15, please.
Diane, do you have it?
No, I can't.
Yeah, that's you.
Could you remove like number five?
Yep.
Because I was not present that night.
The approval of consent agenda as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we will do the town council special meeting event December 1st, 2023. How can you approve?
Summum.
All in favor?
Aye. Well, I recuse or whatever the correct terminology is if in the, no, it's absent.
Alright, number six, vacancies and appointments. Vacancies, personnel board?
No.
Conservation conditions?
No.
Uh, resignations. Patricia Olney Murphy, Juvenile Hearing Board member, term expires April 11th, 2025.
I move that her resignation be accepted with the.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we need a motion to post that? Is there a motion or just post?
Well, you can post, but you have a letter from Gabrielle Prohmata.
Oh.
She'd like to move up into the full member position.
Oh, she is a member now?
She is, she's an alternate. She'd like to move up into the full membership. So, it's up to you. Now then you move her off, then the alternate position would be offered. And she's already given you a letter that she's interested in that full membership vacancy.
Gabrielle, take motion.
I can.
And the chair does recommend that.
Right. I certainly could do that unless we need to wait till next month, but I don't, it's not posted as a vacancy. I don't know. They might be both posted and then the one.
That's typically what we do.
Okay.
The one we post in February, we give Ms. Prohmata's surname the full position. What you, but let's see.
Well, it's not in the table.
Okay.
There's another request on which we're not here yet. I was going to count in February.
Well, can you do it, Paul?
Motion to post your department position in the alternate position.
Yeah, why don't we, well.
Because the alternate is not vacant yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott.
But we anticipate it, good day?
Yeah.
You did, it's alternate, so, yeah, they're both posted, they're both vacant now.
Yeah, couldn't we anticipate that it will be? Just a solicitor, you know.
Doesn't sound like a legal question. But no, no, I don't, I, I wouldn't.
They're a member, no, only the member is vacant right now.
Alright, then we'll just post that and, right? That sounds good.
Your motion?
I move that the position of Juvenile Hearing Board member be posted?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Regular position, now you're moving alternate.
No, you're not.
Yeah.
Not unless you appoint the other one who's.
That's, yeah.
Okay, next up is appointments. C, Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust Committee member to serve four-year term, beginning date of appointment. Continue the first. Number two, Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust Committee member to serve unexpired term, ending April 6th, 2024. Board of Canvassers, alternate member to serve unexpired term, ending May 3rd, 2027. Okay, number four, Public Works Burger, anything wrong?
Really have time to do interviews with the holidays coming up on me so quick.
Do you, yeah, I ask, do you have applicants or an applicant or?
A. A.
Okay.
Okay, the next one, transfer station attendant?
Same, expect a high up for February.
Okay, six, 2024 tree ward.
I move that we reappoint Rob Chaffey. We have his certificate of appropriateness and all the rest of it. He can be, he is, and he will continue, won't you?
Yes, sir.
Are you willing to continue?
Yes.
Good. Then my motion stands.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, thanks, Rob.
Congratulations.
Another achievement, thank you.
Okay, expiry terms, none this month. Public hearings, none this month. Public comment.
That's a first.
None this month. Uh, number nine.
Have you had one?
No, I was saying, I just, no, okay.
He didn't shop.
You know why I did that.
Number nine, new business. Proposed modifications to planning department. This here, Bill called me this afternoon. This here, he says right now he's all set when we get to the budget hearing. We've got some things to float around in terms of some of these fees that are coming in. He says it would be much better to discuss it during the budget process, so.
Now, if I could, I had asked it, this I had to replace on Demet's agenda. And I, I know that there are concerns that Olivia has and she may have already expressed some, and she, she would like to talk about some of the concerns, and not about Bill, but about the way assistance he might need, which he may not ask us for, but one only has to go in and look at the heaps and piles of projects and ask him. And he doesn't want more time, you know, some of you know that if you've spoken to him. He's not looking for more time for himself, but he's already here. I know I would say Thursday, he happened to be here in the building. He, he's putting in more time. And I think we should think about whether or not, besides just the fee issues, whether or not there's anything that we might be able to do to help him alleviate some of what's there. So my suggestion is that we carry this, don't finish it. The next month, if we could, if we could, please, thank you.
Okay, item B, regular meeting November 6th, 2023. Public comment, Ace Davis, discussion and possible research relating to town litigations.
Yes, I put it on there so long, it's the first time I haven't seen Ace at the meeting. I could speak to this now, I prefer to wait till he's here, so I speak while he's here, but.
You are continuing to next month.
Yeah, why don't we, if he's here, it's not, we'll, we'll put it then.
Okay.
I'd rather talk while he's here and not talk when he's not.
Or you can continue to next week also, is that a problem, Lynn? No?
Yeah, we can if we want to.
Make it next month, okay.
I think that next month might be better. I understand, I understand why Mike's asked for that. I mean, I certainly might have something to comment, but nothing.
So next week or next month?
It doesn't matter, maybe next month would be an actual regular meeting, you might have a better chance of being able to do it. I just try to talk to his face and I'm on his back.
Okay. Wait, please.
Okay, next up is. C, Planning Board Member to Council dated December 12th, 2023, comprehensive plan. At this point here, I was at the planning board meeting with discussion this morning. Getting here, February 26th, maybe, standard hearing?
Can we go back? Was it too late?
Aye.
Can we, was it too late to go back to the last item?
No? Okay, great, okay, alright, we'll go back. Go back to B, regular meeting, November 6th, 2023, public comment, Ace Davis, discussion and possible research related to town litigation.
So I had asked for that to be on the agenda because last month's public comment, Resident Ace Davis made some comments that I wanted to have the opportunity to address. And we're gonna continue this because he wasn't here until now, and I wanted to say it, you know, with him, present. He had stated that in my campaign platform, I had referenced controlling legal expenses with our town solicitor. I never said that, I haven't even thought it. It was, I said general statements about controlling spending in the town, but never anything to do with, with a solicitor. I also, you made, you made reference that there's a lot of money being spent on litigation in the town. And I, I can't help but just shake my, scratch my head in bewilderment that majority of the litigation in the town has been created or brought forth by you. And then you say how much money we're spending on litigation. And I just can't let that go by without saying something, it doesn't make any sense to me. So I needed to, I needed to say that. Is, is anybody else, I know that this, this, there's also been, you referenced, I don't know how many open litigations, but I did speak with the solicitor, and the overwhelming majority of those cases have been closed in one way or another. So there's only a few existing open cases as far as I know. And it's not the list that you've mentioned. So I wanted to clear that for the record, for my record. Does anybody else have anything else?
I, I, you know, I'd like to speak to it. I, I referred the comment, I didn't see the paperwork that was submitted, but I, I understand there was some list of cases, I'm not really sure. But I think they might have been referred to you, Jim, or not, or you looked at them. My, my only, I'm sorry?
The gentleman submitted them as part of the record.
Oh, and what, but I didn't ask for them. Is that what you have in your hand that was submitted?
Yes.
And that, would you mind, since I didn't see it? Or would you just tell me in essence what it is you're holding in your hands without no due diligence?
Sure, no, I'm happy to leave this, well, I, there is in fact, as was represented, approximately 167 cases listed in which the town is mentioned in the heading of the case. And to the extent that there might have been a misconception that there were 167 open cases, when you look at this list, if one looks at the word status, which is under each case, it tells you either closed or unassigned. Those are the two things that they use. Unassigned, as far as I can tell, means that it just has not gone to trial yet or hasn't been reached decision. A couple of them I saw I know have reached decision, but in any event, I just counted the ones that said closed next to case. Of the 1567, I counted either 156 that were closed, either said closed or had said unassigned that I know are closed. But the over, I mean, there were only a couple of those. So there are literally 154 that have the word closed next to it. So out of the 167, 156, at least on this list, are in fact closed. A couple of them go back, one of them goes back to 1984.
Eighty, nineteen eighty-four?
Yeah, so we're talking about cases that have been going on or have either been placed into litigation or otherwise in the last, most of them are in the last 20 years. But some are even beyond that, and most, many, many, many of these are cases where I assume they are, they're brought by, by our council that, that runs down the, like, the taxpayers and the like. And so that, that is no, there was no cost to the town for that, those are done on a contingency basis. And I didn't count those, but there are tens and tens and tens, if not hundreds of those. And, and they result in money generally coming into the town. Uh, and, and so, that, that's all, comment on it, it reads for itself.
Don't say anymore. No, don't, don't say anymore, but I, I'd like to just say this for the record. I mean, people have been listening days different months, and when you, when he said what he said, Jim, the public needs to know you've been a solicitor for 30 years now. And I don't know what the dates are, like I said, I didn't ask to see that. But I would think over a period of time, you said something's there for 20 years ago. There's nothing.
Eighty-four?
One goes back forty.
Well, there's, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing that you've done that, because I've been sitting here since 2006, and there's nothing that you, that you've litigated that you haven't been directed to do by this council. So I, I, I don't, you know, this whole concept of, of all these cases, which is said publicly, but no opportunity to, Mike, I'm really glad you put this on the agenda. Because when I hear this, I think it's most unfortunate that, you know, this kind of thing gets tainted. Now, obviously, Asa wishes to speak, and I don't think that's part of tonight's meeting.
I'd like to, I'd like to just comment.
I wish you would.
I thank you for those sentiments, but I didn't take it personally. I mean, I, I just reviewed the list, and it says what it says, anybody who wants to take a look at it can. Unless I'm misconstruing the word closed, it means that it's no longer open. That's my legal brilliant interpretation of the word closed. So to that extent, we've got probably 157 out of 166, 68.
Well, but enclosed means it's been, I assume that means it's been adjudicated.
Not open, no fees being assessed to the town. That's all I have to say on it, I really don't want to comment. As you know, I don't comment on litigation, so.
No, I, I know.
This is a document.
I just, I just thank you, Mike, for putting that on here, I mean, to, to hear this.
Oh, I was obligated to do it, but.
Well, I know.
I can't, I mean, no.
I didn't, I didn't, honestly didn't remember you campaigning, I mean, I know you were out there.
It wasn't much.
Well, I know you were out there.
The only thing I wanted to correct was, you stated that I was the top vote getter, vote getter. I was not the top vote getter, that was the previous election. Olivia was the top vote getter in the last election.
But you see, he's written to us to correct that, but the public, you know, doesn't anyway. But anyway, thank, thank you, Jim.
Alright, onto the next item. Planning Board Member to Council dated December 12th, 2023, comprehensive plan. And there's a letter here from the planning board, I was at this meeting, and this one here, the comp plan, we're looking to do a joint public hearing on February 26th, 2024. He's talking to the planner, and there's, probably we could have done it a little earlier. He says even doing the 26th gives them, I don't know, a little press for time, so. And that was, I think that's a Tuesday.
Well, I think the recommendation is to do it the week of the 26th.
I know, I just wanted to say, Dan, it says week of, so maybe we have to look and see when this is opened.
When I got this advertised, so the 26th would be the Monday.
So this is, so they have to advertise for one week, right? This isn't zoning or anything, this is a company?
It's adopted, correct, Scott?
Yes.
Yeah.
This, this is, I think for the record, Dan, if I could, I think maybe you have it in front of you, but just that paragraph that speaks to the reason for the joint hearing, might, I think I'd like the public here to know. It says, our recommendation is that, this, this comes again from the planning board, that there is a, one joint public hearing, as you said, Dan, with council and planning board to save time and money. Statute, the statute does allow for a joint meeting. This hearing would be on the revised draft comp plan, would include all comments received by the CPAC, planning board, public and state. And then in the event that Exeter, in the event that Exeter receives subsequent comments from the state after March 1st, these comments can be addressed at a later date. However, Exeter would comply with the March 1st deadline to have a revised comp plan adopted. So once again, it's compliance with, as you know, the state statute that we are attempting to be in compliance with, so.
Well, that's where we also have a gray area, set the date, you think.
Well, the 27th, the panel has their meeting.
That's a June day, so the 26th is a Monday. So probably do it on a Monday, because we always have this on a Monday.
Well, not every, well, it's not every Monday, so, well, is that Monday available?
Yeah.
And then there was just one issue, was a gray area was going back and forth in that meeting. The state law. I have a little text here, municipality, fully updated, readopted comprehensive plan within 12 years from the day of the previous plan's adoption. Such municipalities shall not be able to utilize the comprehensive plan as a basis for denial of municipal land use decision. And there was some back and forth, the way that was written, the March 1st deadline, is that an approved comp plan from statewide planning or approved one from the town? So if we can get Steve Seifel to research that and get back to us with what he thinks? Because, and I was talking to Bill today, he says quite a few of these towns don't even have their comp plans completed, because one, they're coming in this kind of situation, so.
We, if I can, we did discuss this at the planning board meeting, and Steve's not, Steve Seifel, it wasn't his official opinion, he wanted to do further work, but his reading of the statute just said of approved comprehensive plan, it doesn't say approved by the state.
It doesn't say approved by who?
Right, well, the governing body is really the town council.
If you can give him the, give us a written decision on that, so, something that we have in front of us for that meeting.
Sure.
But Dan, I see, I know your point, but I don't know if that's really, I mean, it's an issue, but it isn't. We just have to do it and then hope that it's.
What? I pay the lawyers for, because we don't have a lot of time.
Well, if the, well, if the lawyer says it may not apply, then that, what's that, that does is simply open the door for everybody else that wants to say, oh, you don't have a plan, so I think we should proceed, assuming we have one.
I'm still comfortable proceeding without something where it's been researched by your legal department.
So you mean March 1st could come and we might not take any action?
No.
Because what?
The same we approve it, they tell us it's not approved. That's what I'm saying, Cal.
Yeah, okay. Well, I just think we need to proceed as best we can.
Oh, I'm gonna keep proceeding, let's just have, have the council research and give us a written opinion.
So we're doing the public hearing on February 26th, at what time?
It's a Monday, yeah.
At what time?
Seven?
Well.
Twelve, it sounds good. Seven?
Seven.
Alright, and just whether you want some cycle, maybe we could have it for the February meeting?
Yeah, yeah, it's a month anyway.
Now, we have that information for your joint, and we'll advertise. So I'll have to put this over for, under unfinished business. So for that letter.
Does that a public hearing?
Mike?
I got it.
Because that particular item isn't on tonight's agenda, the only thing that's here is, is mail-in. Well, that's why you're saying that you need to wait till the February meeting, like to put that issue on the agenda for a public, exactly.
The cycle, yeah.
Oh, right, oh, well, okay.
Because.
But also the public hearing, you can, we can vote and schedule it and the February meeting, I guess. What you're suggesting, because we don't know.
I, yeah, we just said we.
That's fine, I would say that it's clean. Alright, clean, I mean, it's good.
I don't see the, I don't see the downside of voting in, of us approving it. If it gets kicked back, it gets kicked back, at least we have something to work with.
Well, you're shaking your head, yes.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know the downside, if it gets, if it gets kicked back, what's the worst?
Well, we just have to try.
I wanted to talk about, see, here again, has to say more, further.
Well, that, that was the back and forth at that meeting, is typical of a state board, thank you.
Well, we'll hold to our interpretation, and then we'll have to let someone else who challenges us, which won't be anywhere in this room, well, eh?
We could, we could have a motion, and we could, we could vote, and the worst that could happen is they just kick it back. I think it makes sense to, to have something that.
Well, that will come after the, that will come after the public hearing. But, but the issue tonight is, can we vote to schedule a hearing that, or should we wait till the February agenda because?
February?
Yeah, specifically.
Okay, excuse me.
Right, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, okay.
I don't think I need more than a week, I don't think I need more than a week.
If you, if you need more than a week, can you put it on for next Monday night? Well, I'm just saying, I know what I'm asking.
Let's keep it simple for him, right?
I am.
It's February 26th, 7:00 P.M.
If she says, oh, wait, I need more time, then, then fine. We'll give you more. We don't want to pressure you, right? Just add number 13 in it.
Okay, next up is Planning Board Member memorandum to council dated December 19th, 2023, state land use mandates. That's supposed to be 12th?
Yeah.
Is it?
This is the memo that we received from.
Well, December 12th, it's a typo on the agenda. And this was at the same meeting, these are all laws that went into effect January 1st, and we're one of the few towns that have had the challenge and got stuff passed. There's some concerns from, some of the planning board on this. And one including Arizona. Next is the chapter review, the third was land development, some revision review. Four was the zoning act, and then that's pretty much it, right, Scott?
Yes.
And then with discussion, they're wanting to send a letter out. These are all been passed and approved and signed by the governor, and we're still going back and forth, wanting to go see if we can get some of this changed, which probably won't happen, I suggest, and I would think is, if you guys could go through this and give us some language, and we can get together with the local legislators, like Judy Casper or Megan Todd, and see what they can do with it, is that something you guys can have at next month's meeting?
That would be. That would be, that would be challenging, because there's, there's obviously a lot to vet, and I think that the intent of the letter is we know the land use commission is continuing to meet, and we expect a suite of additional bills this session. So I think what we're saying is, let's try to fix the issues that we've identified here as flaws in the bills that passed last year before they go forward with additional restrictions.
Is there something you can do, like some Cliff Notes, that where, I mean, if you give it to me, I can pick up a phone, call Julie Casmiero, Megan Carter, and go meet with them, something I can bring to that? That's something we need to vote to the council, or?
I'm just asking.
Because from what I understand, the speakers eliminating each rep to only fifteen bills this year, and today was the first day of the session, so that's something, because I can, I do.
Hey, I, I just have, Dan, I have a question here, I see there's some specifics here that is addressed here in Scott's memo. Would, would you mind if we asked Scott if he could, I mean, this is serious business, and Scott, I appreciate you being here, and I see other members of the board here. Could we ask Scott if he would address any of this? Because it's pretty specific, some of that.
We did try to include some specifics where possible, and we just think that what, what happened last year is inconsistent with the state's land use plan that's been in effect for over ten years. Exeter and all rural and suburban towns have been required to be consistent with that plan when we update our comprehensive plans. And I think our point we're trying to make here is we made every effort to comply with that plan. We've done what they've asked us to do. And, and, but there, some of the densities now that they're actually requiring in communities like Exeter, we think are beyond what the state guide plan has recommended for rural towns like Exeter that aren't served by public water, public sewer, appropriate infrastructure. Like the adaptive reuse bill would be fifteen units per acre, which is, in my opinion, excessive. Beyond the carrying capacity of what a town like Exeter could reasonably support without supporting infrastructure. And I think the point of this memo is to use examples like that, and the inclusionary zoning that just, again, allows an excessive amount of additional units. And ironically, it actually hurts Exeter in trying to comply with the low and moderate income housing. Because most of the units that they're giving as a density now would not be restricted as low and moderate income units. So ironically, we're giving a density bonus for units that aren't low and moderate income, that actually works against us.
It's illogical.
It, it really is illogical.
Now, I got a question before I go too far, are the adaptive reuse, when you read that, it's almost like it's geared towards all these main buildings.
I think that was the intent, but if you read it carefully, it could be the building across the street, it could be any, any commercial building could qualify. And that, that's part of our concern with the last issue, a lot of this language is very broad. It's subject to multiple interpretations. I've had conversations with very experienced land use attorneys, and it, it, you know, it's just not clear, um, some of these statutes, so unfortunately, it's very likely that some of these are going to go to litigation. So ultimately, judges are going to be, the courts are going to be determining what these statutes actually mean. And we just think that's terrible public policy. And I think the point is, if towns like Exeter don't express our concerns about these kinds of bills, people tend to think, well, we didn't hear from anybody, they didn't have any objections, so.
Good point, that was a good point.
We're concerned that they're just going to go forward and adopt more changes.
Well, the thing is, last year, they heard, they heard from me, and Ernie Almonte was on the phone with me, doing his times over this, and I don't know, did you testify if there are any of these bills when they were being heard?
I did not.
Because I had Ernie Almonte ripping his hair off, if you would, so.
Dan, if I could, um, you know, Scott, this, this communication makes some points that are so, I think, concerning, I, I mean, here's the first line, Exeter recognizes the severity of the crisis of housing. Every, every municipality has an obligation, obligation to help, but then it goes on to speak about, Scott points out, the stand use, state use plan called the Call for Future Move, to be concentrated within an urban services boundary where development could be adequately served by supporting infrastructure. Statement, all of Exeter is outside the urban services boundary. I mean, to me, that's exactly what you're talking about.
Excellent, excellent, excellent.
It's so well done, I, I, I hesitate to say, and maybe this isn't appropriate, but, but still, I think you, this piece should be forwarded.
Yes.
From this council, indicating that we concur with the observations you brought to our attention. Now, I'm, I'm asking, is there something wrong with my logic here?
That's all I could think of when I read it, and I think he alludes to that at the beginning, as a, as a suggestion.
I mean, if we say this, you, you've said so much, I couldn't speak to it, I haven't done the work that you people have done. But you have, and I think you brought it to us. I just, just, just that sentence.
Well, the, the issue is, these are already state law.
Okay.
But they need feedback, yeah, but hear me now, they want the feedback when these are being testified of, from the committees up there last year.
So. So. Fine. Okay.
Not now, not after that.
Okay, well.
That's what I said, I was on the phone with Ernie Almonte, and, you know.
Well, wasn't he lead, at the time, was he not lead of cities and towns?
He was the head of the league, he's still, he's still.
Was he not then?
He was that, yeah.
And did they listen to him as?
Obviously not, Calvin, so if they're not going to listen to the, the director of the League of Cities and Towns, are they going to listen to us?
Maybe not, but I don't, I don't see why.
Maybe not, maybe short, as I was saying.
I don't see why we don't make a statement, and then they say, we tried, and then they.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they can change, you know, they can change things.
You're not going to get it changed, what I'm saying is, if you could sit here and your best bet is start with our representatives and senators here, that, instead of sending, we can send a letter up to the Speaker of the House, it's going to get thrown in the trash. Give it to your local representatives, you might get something.
Well, we could do that.
You might get something.
Yeah, we could do that, but wherever it goes, I mean, this needs to be, this needs to be aired, in my opinion.
We need to go on record.
On the record.
And also the Senate, I mean, that Senate.
As Dan says, it may make no difference, and it probably won't, but we will be on the record for the work you've done, and the observations you've made, and I think that's important.
We should have done it last year.
Well, maybe they didn't see the implication.
That would have been the best time to do it, this is the second best time.
Maybe they didn't see all these implications until it appeared, I could be wrong.
And it's very difficult, as you know, Dan, these bills get posted, oftentimes, you have very little time, opportunity to do a deep dive on it. Unfortunately, after the bill passed, that's when we had an opportunity to fully understand the ramifications, and they're pretty severe. And I'm, I'm aware that other towns are beginning to push back with their concerns as well. You might have seen that there was a very good op ed in this Saturday's Journal, where somebody from Naragansett was expressing their concerns about what the impacts are going to be to that community.
I did see that.
So I, I think it's, the more they hear, the more they begin to understand, that there are legitimate concerns.
The other guy in Naragansett, I was reading that a couple weeks ago, and Shakarchi's going to go right after them with legal action, from what they've rewritten out there.
Right, but we didn't do that here, we didn't rewrite, we rewrote in accordance of what was required. But let's not let people think otherwise. We tried, we are a complaint.
They don't want to be in the same bed as Naragansett.
I'm not suggesting, no one's suggesting that we are.
Do you think there's a downside to sending this correspondence off?
I think you're better off sending it to the local legislators and.
So you think there's a downside to sending this off to the state? In addition to that?
I think it's on the trash can.
You think there's a downside?
Well.
Well, I was threatened on T V, on channel twelve last year by Shakarchi, if I didn't like his proposed changes, he would take more of our state aid. That was in April or May of last year.
Okay, they're not going to be held hostage just to speak.
That's what I'm saying is. The thing is, now it's law.
It's still Randy law, so we have to follow the law.
But if they're, well, if they're still meeting, laws can be revised, we all know that.
Yes, they can make some, they can make some changes.
And that's what the legisla, our local legislators are for, so.
I understand, that's fine, but I would, I, you know what I'd do, I'd send it to the chair of the commission, if whatever there is such a.
The land use commission.
Whatever's happening, I don't know who that is, I would send it to them with copies to our local legislators, so they.
I would sit there, draft something for the local legislators, and then copy this land use commission on it.
Okay, you, you don't think we could do this?
This, this is, this is, this, how could we do any better than this?
That's what I'm saying.
Oh my gosh, this is so well written.
Thank you, Mike.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
No, you're, no.
Go that route, no, go that route.
I'm saying different things.
Highlight it, you know, get some, get, uh.
I don't know, but what's, I don't know what's to highlight, every, every paragraph, every section.
We just need, I think we need to, in my opinion, we should just send the bulk of this, uh, it's called a draft, I read somewhere, and it's a great draft.
All right, well, let's defeat my motion, because my motion that I'd like to place, if there's a second, I'd like to place a motion on the table that we send this piece of, of, of summary of, of whatever we're calling as, series of observations, if you will, from our planning board to the chair of the land use commission and to our local legislators, ask for our legislators to assist in intervening on my behalf.
Is there a motion?
There is, it is.
I apologize, I'm going to second that.
Okay. Well, that'll work, that's what I'm saying, go the legislative route, not sending this right up to the speaker, because you're not going to make.
I didn't say speaker.
I would send the fourth part to realize you sent one senator, you two reps, copy this house and commission on it. That puts the heat on the legislators. If they're a copy.
Well, wasn't the heat on them already, see, I know one of our legislators, right? It's supportive of the Shakarchi initiatives, I mean, I've already been told that. Hopefully, hopefully with some, with some of this, they might say, well, I guess really, maybe we should do it, and thinking about that. So I'm suggesting, so my motion was to send it to the chair of the land use commission with copies to our legislators.
I'll do it, you all will do it now. Now read the heat some of the legislators.
All right, well, then, vote against, and vote against the motion, and I'll call a question.
What's that?
I'd rather send it to our legislators first.
Is that a?
Oh, there you go. So, there you go.
Do we want to amend that, or do you want to have the first vote, vote to send it to the head of the land use commission, and then copy the legislators?
Vote to say no. That's correct.
All in favor?
Wait a minute, I'm not sure where we're going with this.
So we're going.
You want to change?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to change.
Okay. I'm not sure how to vote, I mean, we don't want to, I'm confused.
Calvin wants to send, I understand the rest of the.
I understand, I'm not sure if we're supposed to vote yes or no for our ultimate goal here.
And then, and then copy our local legislators.
Why don't we just amend his motion?
Well, that's what they're going to do.
Can we amend, can you amend your motion?
I prefer not to.
You prefer not to?
Because I like what I said.
Okay.
All in favor of Cal's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion failed. Okay, so, now I'll make a motion to send the memo to our three legislators, Representative Julie Casmiero, Megan Carter, and Senator Elaine Morgan, and copy the state land use commission. Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'd, I'd rather send it somewhere, than nowhere.
Well, no, it's not going to go nowhere.
It's still getting there. It's splitting hairs at that point.
Okay. Uh, next up is E, private detective license application, Doug White, Twenty-seventh Preservation Drive, Saunders, Pound, Rhode Island.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, all requirements have been met.
Well, maybe Mr. White would like to say hello. He's here, well. You've been here a while, a little bit.
Yeah. Since twenty twenty-one, and I've been a P I in around two thousand and seven. Primarily digital friend.
What is it now?
Digital friend.
Okay.
There must be a pretty booming.
I'm sorry?
Is that a booming business right now?
Yes.
Governor makes an order?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to grant Doug White of Twenty-seventh Preservation Drive a private detective license. Second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Department of Emergency Management requests to go out to bid multi-juris.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Multi-jurisdicinal hazard litigation plan.
Dan, no, Dan, I spoke to Dori this afternoon, uh, she called me, uh, oh, I shouldn't say, she said, well, something about tomorrow night's meeting, I said, no, 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 it's tonight. So I said, well, anyway, she, she did say she would come. If you look at the document that we have here, I, I asked if she was expecting that we would review or ask questions and adopt this tonight and go out to bid, or do you expect us to look at it and then put it on the February agenda? And she said, oh, okay, that's fine. That, to, to, to hold it. Now, the reason I, I had several questions of her, and one of them was with regard to the, the dates, there were a lot of them Xed out. And those were dates that we were, were intending to decide how much time we needed. I said, well, Dori, there's, there's a, a bit of confusion, because the last page, if you look at what you were given, the last page says sealed bids will be accepted by the clerk's office until Friday, December sixteen,
Two thousand and four.
Twenty-four at two P M. So I said, Lynn, don't look at me that way, that's the way I looked when I was reading it. And so I said, well, Dori, are you intending that this would be a, a long-term preparation and research? And she said, no, no, and she said, Dori, come on, we're just, we just did it, did I tell you to come later? I said, what did I say, eight o'clock, oh, I'm sorry, we're just moving along here. Oh, Dori, thank you for coming, we just began.
Perfect time for this.
Yeah, perfect time.
Perfect time, and I said, I said, Dori, you don't have to come like right away at seven, but, and she didn't, and.
Oh, yeah.
So, so, Dori, we're just talking about the little inconsistency on the end here about the December date, which we, as Dori said, no, 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 that shouldn't say December, it should say.
It should have been Xed out, like the other dates.
Yeah, right. So now the question is, what was, what would be most appropriate? If you have questions about this, it's very comprehensive, uh, I didn't know, as you perhaps noted, uh, a, a lot of it falls to, and, and Exeter, so, two towns, the opening of bids, everything that's going to be done here, which I don't have, I don't have a problem with, I assume that this is a joint, you've told us, Dori, this is a joint venture between the two towns.
Yes.
They worked this out collectively, what we have, so I don't know if you have questions, put this in advance.
So first of all, that date you mentioned, is that a typo, is that?
No, well, it is not there, it's not supposed to be, no.
It's what?
It's a typo.
It's supposed to be what, twenty twenty-three?
No, no, well, no, that's already passed.
It's supposed to be X's?
You're supposed to fill it in.
So there's no.
Yeah, I know, where, where, where that date would have come from, there's a bit of a mystery, but we won't go any further on that. I'm just saying that with the other X's at the beginning, the question was, what dates would we be setting here? And that's a date that we all have to address. You see, that's on page, there's a page, page one, or it's very early on.
It's in the table, contents is.
Well, table, and then there's a, um, oh, the first date, yeah, effective date of the award shall be on or. effective date of the award shall be on or about, and that's blank. Oh, here they are, bid summary, you see it on page three?
Yes.
So, we, bids are due by, and I don't know, if we put this out to bid today, for example, would a two-month period be something, I don't know what, how complicated this is gonna be, Dory.
I was hoping to have a 30-day turnaround.
Okay, we, hearing Dory, so she good?
What'd she say?
Well, she, she hoping for 30 days.
Yeah, we had talked, yeah.
You had talked about this.
She and I did, I said, if we put on the agenda, request it all to bid.
Okay.
And like when we do it, drops and everything, we just, at the end of the month, we advertise for the end of the month, and we open the end of the month, and then that's the new award. If that timeline works, yes.
That's okay. Well, I didn't, I didn't, no, when Dory called me, you two had already talked that through, so I didn't know that, that's okay.
I got one question. Request for proposal town Exeter and West Greenwich, are they also doing, bring out a bid, or just us?
Just us.
The cost is shared between the two?
Yes.
Right.
So this would have to be approved by their council also?
I don't know that they have the same procedure as Exeter, I think that they, I think that the EMA director can go right to the town council.
There's probably a question for them, because it's funny for both towns.
It is funny for both towns. They also have a town administrator that may have said-
It's just a simple question, you don't want to go award this, and then what, they're gonna say, wow, we're not giving any money.
They wrote it.
Okay.
We, we, I, I, I have, I personally have enough faith in Dory to think that that wouldn't happen. But I understand your question, and Dory's answering that as best she can, like they, they wrote it together and-
We wrote together, so, yeah.
So.
I don't know what their approval process is, do you need to?
We could always approve subject to joint approval. I, I mean, that's the thought, you know, that we go ahead and-
So we wait to advertise it, so we find out whether they've approved it, or not?
Well, probably, that makes sense, doesn't it? Because if they have this, you know, but, do you know, you, you, you assume that-
I can call-
Other folks have reviewed this, probably.
I can't assume that, and did you say you can call someone, or? Well, you're dealing with, um, who?
Brooke Lawrence.
So you can ask him if it's going on the council's agenda for approval. Yes. Although I can call Kelly, but she may not know if he's, anything about it, if he's done it. If he hasn't given it to her yet to put on an agenda. So, ask Brooke. Okay. If he's presented to his council for approval. Once they get the approval, then this council can approve going up the bid. If they're gonna pay the expenses.
Yeah, so, so perhaps it will be appropriate then to have this continue to February, then we have those answers.
Until Monday.
Well, I'm gonna say Monday. Monday's an inside show, because there's other whole list of stuff to do. So between now and, and next month, then, we, we could be notified, even if Lynn gets a call or some, on, on our behalf, but it's well said, because you're not sure if they did approve it, yeah, right, you don't know.
I don't know, yeah, I don't.
Okay, might make sense that we wait.
First you want to make a motion, go out to bid upon West Greenwich's approval of it?
That's good.
Well, that's different, no, it's not different, I mean, we don't usually, well, no, we don't usually do things without a town.
That's good, then you can do it as soon as you hear back, right?
Yeah.
Then I wonder, if we get the approval from them, do we want their minutes to make sure we have it in writing? That they approve this?
Sure.
So maybe we should wait.
We also have to, you know, there's this paperwork here about this summary. I think this is what people would be picking up, if I understand it correctly, I would advertise, people would come in, pick this up. But, right, but these, there are no dates here.
Well, we would fill that in.
We'd have to fill it out.
Right. Well, do you want to do, we would do it, you will do it?
She sent the, um, word, so I'd be filling it in and attaching it to our notice.
Okay, whatever the dates, whatever dates were. Whatever dates are appropriate. That's fine with me, I just, I just want to help Dory move it forward.
Right, I didn't want to spend a lot of time, because it's, the clock is ticking on the award, so it's 18 months from-
From, but what's that time, when you say the clock is ticking? We hear a lot of that here lately, like, no, not about you, but about cop plan and all this stuff. What do you, what do you think it is?
Well, I think it was when that, whenever you got the letter, when, when the first, uh, from Rema came out, which is probably about a month ago. So I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time in this process, because I wanted to give the time and consult and do that. Yeah, that was my thought, but. And if it's not the town council that approves it, whether it's the town administrator, or is that not typical?
We don't know their process or whether they approve, probably.
For me, the ult, the ultimate, if you, if you mean this approving this.
Yeah.
We don't know, that he may have wide latitude.
He may.
He may.
That's the impression I got, but I need to get that in there.
See, we don't give Dan wide latitude, but he might, if he wanted it. So I, I will-
You'll have a time to listen.
Yeah, I, I will move that we place this, uh, request for proposals out for bid as soon as Lynn receives verification that it has been approved on West Greenwich. Does that make sense, Lynn? Rather than removing it for, rather than moving it to February? Okay, what do you think, council?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, can we have the discussions? Favor?
Aye. Thank you, Dory, thank you for coming here, it kind of helped.
Anytime.
My fault for telling you to take your time, who's, uh-
Okay. Number 10, unfinished business, use of American Rescue Plan, possible acquisition of 743 Technobank Road. Maybe I'm operating on that, or no, it's, it's all the worse, it's all the worse, okay, leave that on.
Six oh.
Status, July 2022, communication number 16, government key. Rhode Island Capital Projects Fund, multi-purpose community facilities matching grant. Bring this up.
So I just moved the, um, beginnings of stage three, and as far as I know, we're still in the running, and we're still viable to, to get the, the funds. There's still some more things that have to be done, so I haven't heard of final, but we're still pursuing.
Okay.
In the running, that's where, that's scary, in the running.
Okay, next is Split Rock Mobile Park, request of electrical inspector, obtained engineers' report to provide a, a violation to be collected kindly. We've got some correspondence here from the electrical inspector, after about a year and a half, they finally complied.
You want to kick the whole thing off by just reading this one paragraph?
Well, we still have item number two.
I know, I said, I- Dan, you don't listen, I said, kick the whole item off. Kick the whole item off by reading this, because Richard's here, and after we read this, we might say, Richard, is this, no, we won't say go, we're gonna say, Richard, is this, is this real? Hey, I know it is, so, you want to read it?
So-
To the Exeter-
I had read it, Cal.
Here's, here's what we have here, January 2nd, to the Exeter Council from Ken Johnson, the electrical inspector, upon my, I read this, because many of you know, well, some of you know, this has been a longstanding issue. Upon my December 2023 visit to Split Rock Trail Park with previous electrical inspector, Randy McGovern, I hereby state that all electrical work is hereby complete and passed to my satisfaction. Boy, that's good to read. Are you good to hear that, are you, Richard?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know you are. Now, go ahead, Dan, it's all yours.
Well, the next item is, would you proceed?
Lynn?
Of the license?
Yeah, you can, you can approve it, it'll be, um, good through November 30th, 2024.
So they have to fill out an application and everything, or?
I think we want to put it on hold until all this was-
Have all the, it's been paid?
All three years.
Is it in order?
I'm trying to remember, people, like, there were, you know, plastic or, or-
I don't think we did subject to, I don't think they said subject to.
No.
You want to revisit it, we've had it.
Yeah, I guess so.
You want to see the application? Why, you still have it?
But, it's terrible, isn't it? Good for you, Ken's the next closest thing that I found a ministry.
It could be a great town ministry.
But you wanted this, you know, approved the application dated.
You just got to check and see if there's any fees.
Subject, just do subject two.
I'll make a motion to approve the- Trail Park license renewal for Split Rock Mobile Phone Park Authority South County Trail for license period January 1st, 2024, when do they expire, November?
Yep, then November.
November 30th.
November, yeah.
Till November 30th, 2024, contingent upon all fees and all requirements being met.
Second.
All in favor?
Anyone?
I, I-
Hi, I would just like to say, Richard, good luck, keep trying to do the best you can over there.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay, next up, status update to town of Exeter Code Wardens, this is chapter 14, building regulation article 9 impact please, that is on next week's special council meeting, on the agenda.
It is, on the agenda.
E., Director of Public Works, request for guidance incidentified by Shore Drive. Did you ever hear back from the surveyor?
Yes, in fact, it's gonna be completed, the survey was completed this week.
Okay. That's all, leave that on, that's what we were waiting for.
I, I placed a call, I, you know, we all have known Chris for some time here. I placed a call from last week with a message, and I said, please, but I, of course, you've been talking to him as well, I'm sure. But I said, would you, you know, please help us, we, it's a monthly issue, we, we need to get some help to rub, so.
The residents.
So he, he said he's gonna work on it and get it done.
This week, completed.
I get rid of the surveyor, they're all busy.
With what?
Every other surveyor, try and get one, they're all busy.
No, I understand, but it's not have to be continued, though, because once we have the information, then we have to decide where do we go? What do we do?
Yeah, Exeter Town Perks Office Quoting 675 Ten Live Road, roof and basement issues.
I received a quote for under $5,000 for a small part of it, but I don't think it's, um, it's worth, because it's $4,999. If we have to do cost overruns, it goes over the bid price, so that makes it another issue. And I think it's just not feasible to, to put it at $4,999. So, so, prepare for the full bid, I guess, the blocks, the whole entire roof. And they can't do it now, anyway, so.
You were working on the basement, right?
Oh, there's something I can do over here.
Yeah, he's-
It's come along from last year to this year. The big part-
The waterfall stopped.
The waterfall stopped.
On this side.
Now something else.
It's this core that's always been so, so I've, um, contacted a company that Rob told me to, to come out and give us a call about sealing it, you know, maybe stopping those leaks. But they haven't, they haven't come out with the bad storms we had, they were like-
I'm sure they were.
Basement specialty company?
Yeah.
Excellent.
So, um, I'll try to contact-
Keep trying.
Work with them, and see if we can get them out here, and I'll try somebody else in a few days.
Just, excuse me, but Ken's comment about that, that he got that prompted, something in my memory about what I was thinking.
We're not going out to bid yet for the room, so I want to just raise something.
Item G, November Communication Number 14, Secretary of State's request to participate in Rhode Island sending from Centennial 250, Commissioner inform Walton 250th Committee.
Can I speak for that? I think I probably said, don't, that's to keep it out. One of the items I removed from the communications list is a, is a letter or a suggestion that someone would really like to come and talk to us. So, I'd really like to bring this to your attention in the communications, and just, and suggest that maybe we could just devote a little attention to this person, and then, that's all. Would please?
Would we do that now?
Not, well, I don't know, but, oh, it's on the agenda, it's on the agenda, we could, couldn't we? We have a communication from this, uh, it's, who is it?
Rob, Rob.
Rob, Rob, it's number, uh-
It's like the assistant to the second first name.
Yeah, number 15, is it 15? Oh, Lauren Fogarty is the, um, program coordinator for the 250th committee. And the communication, you must have read it, says, I, I would love to come and acquaint your council to promote the, this celebration. So, you know, we could give her a time, that's, actually, maybe she'll come on any night. No, that's a joke, that's a joke, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But I would say if Lynn might write to this person and ask if they'd like to come and speak at the February meeting? I mean, we're not, it's not a half-hour presentation, it's just... Well, maybe it's the history behind it, it's, have this person.
Well, we'll see what they say.
All right, so I, I, if you don't mind that, I'll, I'll move to, uh, ask Lynn to communicate with Lauren Fogarty and suggest that she could come and speak to us at the council meetings. It is.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you for putting it.
You, you just got to find people on the committee.
Well, no, we just, no, it's fine.
Yeah, okay, I O M H Public Works awarded the bid out of worship. You want to speak to this, do you ask them?
Yeah, um, somehow, he got, um, the amount got passed by. It was, the bid that came in, the only one bid that came in, was accurate, but it was a little deceiving where he underlined, and it was the guy's first bid process with a town. I'll give him that, that's what he told me, and, uh, he wanted to just, he underlined that number, pointing out that we had the municipal discount, because the unit was 10,000 something. Originally, if you, you know, a normal person or would go purchase this unit, so that's what the underline is, it says list is 10,620, the municipal, with the municipal discount, it's 7,395. But all these other items are in my specs, and that should have been added together. So it was very deceiving, so that's how it slipped when we, um, I, I didn't write a, a recommendation for this particular item, so it slipped by more than just me, um, but, so I'd like to see, I-
What, what's the difference this?
$2,200.
$2,200?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the issue is, they, when you told them that we accepted the bid, what to do for the three days?
Yeah, delivered, it has been untouched.
Untouched, you can't use it.
It's sitting there, and they're willing to wait. I was the only bid.
So how do we handle something like this, Jim?
Everything is here, if you added all these up, it comes out to the number. So it's all here on the bid.
All the extras add up to that 10,000.
Exact, to the penny.
Do you have the memo?
Yeah, I got it.
And there were no other bids, so it's not like- There were no other bids, so it's not like, you know.
Well, the other issue is, like, when this happened, I called me, he's like, we're not touching it, we're leaving it right here.
I offered for them to come pick it up, I said, there's a problem, I can't just okay this, because there's a certain way that we have to do things here, and I got approved for a certain amount, because the thing was deceiving, not just to me, obviously, cause other folks thought the same thing, but everything was there to my specs.
So this was extra.
Itemized.
The, the, the motion was that, most of the, and this, he's looking for, the came with all these, those were in the bid.
Well.
Though they missed that.
They didn't have it for that.
Right, so, so in other words.
It's all there.
The, the town misread the number.
Misread. I misread.
We still have the same bid in, it comes up to nine thousand dollars, whatever, so the question is, do you want to confirm the bid at the, at the nine thousand dollar price, or do you wanna go back out the bid? That's your issue, if you wanna, if, if, if the price at nine thousand, as specified on this entire sheet, but as misread, is okay with you, you could still, I think, act on this bid.
Again, it meets every, all specs.
If not, if you think it was so deceiving that you don't believe that, and you don't believe the price is, is fair, then I think you can go back out the bid, but if you think that you're, that it's acceptable at the nine thousand, whatever number.
I have another thought, we got the authorization, we gave, he's got the equipment, now there are other accessories he needs, and we just buy the other accessories?
The accessories were shipped with it, weren't they?
Yes.
Everything was shipped with it.
I know, I'm splitting hairs, but he needs.
To your point, if you looked at the overall number, all those accessories pretty much came below what a retail price would be because of the municipal, if you wanted to look at it.
Can I just add, are, are you suggesting that the nine thousand nine hundred dollar figure is acceptable to you?
Cause I, I think it's just great, absolutely.
And you would, you would, you would
I recommend it.
Suggest and recommend that the council approve it at that number, rather than at the seven thousand dollar number, which they misread it.
We're gonna vote on, can we vote on that?
Exactly.
Vote on that, sure.
Exactly, thank you, Jim.
So, make a, we need a motion to approve the purchase of a power pressure washer from Power Wash Systems for a grand total of nine thousand six hundred thirty-nine thousand ninety cents.
Ninety-five?
Ninety-five cents.
Ninety-five cents.
Sorry.
Except the other issue, the one that he has is completely broke.
Yeah, well, I think that's very important.
Is there a second?
Second.
If he's gonna storm Saturday night, he's gonna need that thing Monday morning.
Second, uh, yes, and I would say that these, the equipment he needs is exactly what we're giving him, as you suggested. So that's why I said.
All in favor?
Hi. Okay, open the box tomorrow, whatever.
Did the guy come down and do the trades with that? And they also came down and did the training with the one, this piece of equipment.
Oh, well, if you didn't open the box already, then open it tomorrow, that's, um.
It's open, sorry.
Okay.
Nice.
Communications.
You're not supposed to say that. They had to for the training.
You had number four.
Yeah, four's my company, so it's just eight. Eight, let's see.
It's the, the, um.
The right one, BGM, off of the. Oh, yeah, West Greenwich Drive, that line, so I had, I had concerns about, I mean, where does it end? Where do we stop clearing, I don't know if there's any clearing going on, there's some water, wetlands there, but I mean, uh, if you look at, uh, a letter from the same people, DM, they refer to healthy trees improve the quality of the air we breathe, produce shade and moderate local temperatures, moderate local temperatures, we, reduce stormwater runoff management costs, increase property values, and reduce energy for heating and cooling. And then we're talking about, it just kills me, we're gonna, everyone wants to cut down the trees and put up these solar panels. This one here is on the line, it's in West Greenwich, it's on the line, I don't know if it has any effect on us, but I just wanted to bring it up and talk about it, it's, um. So it's, um, right near Hopkins Hill Road.
I don't know where it is. I think that's next to that existing one.
It's not too far from anywhere.
There's one in the corner, there's one three thousand feet southeast of the intersection.
I don't know if we can refer this to someone to, if they wanna look into it, or, I just wanted to mention it.
Well, that's not, yeah, that's good, that's good, you did. This, this massive, already solar ray that's on Hopkins Hill Road is like huge, and this is.
Well, that's, that one that's on Hopkins Hill, it's on the corner of that Henry Brown.
Yes, yes.
But it says three thousand foot south.
Well, south is coming this way, uh, approved, well. And you were mentioning it because you.
Well, it's on the line, he sent us a, we got the communication, I don't know if it has any effect, I haven't been over there.
No, maybe.
I'm just bringing it up in case somebody wants to talk about it further than that, hopefully you can refer it to somebody who hasn't gone in. I'm not trying to give warts to another department, but just bringing it up.
Alright. Your name, thank you. Your name, council, you had number five, twelve and fifteen.
Mine is, oh, mine is Mr. Davis's, uh, comment that we, I think, let me get my glasses in. Haven't seen any response concerning the, and, and I, I can't say I can speak to the specifics of, of that, but if it's the end of a state drive, I know that there was an attempt made, I believe, uh, to make some correction there, that would have involved it, so this is what I'm gonna suggest by motion, I'm gonna suggest that the council write to Mr. Davis and indicate he might wish to reconsider what was a recommended or suggested mitigation of that issue some time back.
Which was?
Well, I believe, like, some people were.
Did you make a petition?
Well, the motion was to write to Mr. Davis in writing, asking if he'd like to reconsider a prior, uh.
After all that happened, you really wanna do that?
We need a second.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Can somebody come in?
I, I, I don't understand, well, I.
Well, that's fine, I, I, doesn't, the, I'm not begging for a second, I'm just.
I'm just wondering if we can make a motion if it's not specifically on the agenda.
Well, that's a point well taken, that's a lot to pass.
Alright, maybe we send a good motion, okay.
Well, I died.
Twelve and fifteen, twelve?
Oh, oh, okay. Mizra, the only reason I, I pulled it out is because if you read, um, if you saw Ron, if I said those reports.
Ron has been there.
He's already addressed, but, um, I, I wonder if we could ask our clerk simply to respond to Mizra indicating that our, our building inspector, minimum housing, I think, whatever his title, he has several titles on him, but whatever is most appropriate, has inspected the proper property and has taken appropriate action, just so that, just so that she knows, we didn't do this.
Send her a copy, maybe send her a copy of the memo from the building inspector, that we need to see.
That, that, that was my motion, but.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, can I just say that that copy has been foreclosed on, it's now owned by a bank?
Yeah, right, I, I think we're undetermined there, uh, which makes it difficult, but he's, doesn't he communicate with the bank? I think we, it looked like it, but at least.
It was in California, wasn't it?
I don't know, but, but at least I, I just would like to not, her to know that, that we saw it, we know our building inspector has addressed it as best he can.
Very nice.
That's all. I don't blame her for being upset from what I, I guess, it sounds like nobody, you know, that kind of property.
And they have wild animal refuge.
Yeah, well, the, thank you, cause we do need to show to her that, that, you know, so.
And then fifteen, you already discussed this.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that was, uh, Rob Rod.
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to go into executive sections right now?
Not for me.
Wow, it's a record, is this a record?
No.
Okay.
Could have been if I wanted, yeah, but.
Motion over here, but it would have been complete. All in favor? Alright.
Hi.